...of Destin City Council, January 22, 2019. Got to remember that, we're 19:06 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to be led in invocation by Pastor Kevin Wendt of Grace Lutheran Church. Pastor?
Let us pray. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, from you comes all rule and authority over nations, states, and cities of the world, for the punishment of evil doers and for the praise of those who do well. We humbly ask you to graciously regard these, your servants in our city of Destin. These who make, administer, judge the affairs of this city, look with mercy upon them and grant them to bear the authority you've given them according to your command. Enlighten and defend them. Give them wisdom and understanding that under their reasoned and peaceable governance, your people may be guarded and directed in righteousness and quietness and unity. Protect and prolong their lives that we with them may show forth the praise of your holy name. We pray this in the name of him who reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, together one God, him who is fully God, born fully man, to live the perfect life, to die the perfect sacrifice, to rise from the dead the perfect resurrection and life. Your Son and Savior from sin ascended to heaven and to return the last day to judge the living and the dead, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Kyle? Skip?
Ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to live our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, just take a seat real quick, please. First matter up is our agenda approval. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further comments? Let's see, where's my little button? There we go. Eyes have it. The agenda is approved as it is. First up, we have, under item number one, is approval of our minutes of the January 7, 2019 special city council meeting.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. No further discussion? We have six ayes and then one abstention. So moved.
Who has the abstention so the clerk can record it?
Mr. Mitchell.
I wasn't on the council then, that was...
Item 1B, approval of the minutes of November 19, 2018, regular city council meeting.
So moved. Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any further comment about the meetings? Unanimous. Eyes have it, so moved. I don't think we have any, do we have any proclamations? Special presentations, Ray? I don't believe so. So we'll move right into our public comments on the agenda items that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda, and any other matters not on the agenda. I just want to remind everybody, you have three minutes. When you come up to the podium, just state your name and your address, and Ray will start you on the clock. 5A is a public hearing, 7-1 is not, so Greg Featherston?
My name is Greg Featherston. I live at 3857 Indian Trail, and I am the representative of the Emmergrand and Harborwalk Village, and I just wanted to come before you today to speak about the subject that will be discussed later on regarding pay at exit on private property. Unfortunately, we weren't informed about it, we read it in the paper that it was going to be on today's agenda, but to date, we feel that we have collaborated with the city. We've met with city representatives this past summer regarding the parking, and we also met with DOT most recently on January 3. We are not in agreement with the pay on exit, but we're going to remain open-minded to try to find out and look at all the alternatives that may be available in working our particular parking lots. There's a lot to be considered. There's the roadway configuration out there at the Stoneman 98 intersection, the parking lot configuration on our property, the entrance and exits that are available to us, what off-site opportunities we have, and the operation of the parking lot itself. So I think the most appropriate way for us to proceed with this, both the city and Emmergrand and Harborwalk Village, would be to allow us to meet with perhaps the city manager and a team from the city, and come back to you and report to you our findings, and then even to the extent of holding public meetings if you would see that that would be necessary. So if anything, I just wanted to express our willingness to cooperate with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead. Greg?
Sir, could you tell me why y'all may be against paying on the exit? It may be something that we haven't thought of?
Well, we feel that we've tried to assess it the best we could and reconfigure it in our minds, and we feel we can create gridlock within the property itself and then domino effect by backing up again onto 98. So I think it's, we've got to look at all the alternatives there, but that's the primary reason we feel that can be gridlocked easy enough on our property reversing the collection, and then it'll just stack up because we'll get so many cars, vehicles into our property.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, but we do have, we're looking at other alternatives, double lanes coming in and trying to alleviate that and stack as much as we can on our property.
As well, you have a question?
Okay, thank you.
You can if you want. Is this on?
Public hearing.
Okay, public hearing. All right. All the other cards I got presently are for item 5A in the public hearing. Does anyone here have anything that's on the agenda that's not a public hearing that they would like to talk about? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period, and we'll go right into city manager's report. Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is a request from Mr. Theriak to dismiss code enforcement appeals and/or violations, and I'll let Ms. Kimberly Kopp address this item.
Thanks. This is an item that was previously before you. It involved the three properties listed in the agenda item, and the first floor is being used as habitable space in violation of the floodplain ordinance. As you know, we entered into a settlement agreement that authorized us to submit 1316s to FEMA, which we did within the timeframe set forth in the agreement. FEMA, due to Hurricane Michael and subsequently due to the government shutdown, has been slow in processing them, so for that reason, I guess one of the property owners is trying to sell his property, so Mr. Theriak has requested that we dismiss the appeal and just allow FEMA to continue their process. There's really no negative effect to the city because the 1316s will ultimately be issued, which would protect the city CRS rating at that time.
Does any council members have any questions on that? So do you want us to entertain a motion then? You had a recommended motion in the briefing document, wasn't it?
Yes, just to allow us to take the steps that are requested in Mr. Theriak's letter.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and move forward with the steps requested by Mr. Theriak.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Is any further discussion on this? The vote is unanimous, so moved.
Item B, on January 7, council directed me to enlist the services of Ms. April Fisher of Fisher Planning and Development Services to prepare an independent evaluation of the development rights of the subject property based on the city's comprehensive plan amendments in response to the pre-suit notice of Burt Harris' claim submitted to the city by the Destin Fishing Fleet. We have that report before you, and Ms. Kopp will answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Destin? That's okay, that's all right. This is a question for legal counsel. Given the nature of the Fisher report, making a conclusion that it appears that there was no vesting, what financial exposure would we have to our own attorney's fees or costs in the event that they did file suit in the Burt Harris Act claim?
The Harris litigation would be a bifurcated process. In the first step of the bifurcation, a trial court would just determine whether the fishing fleet have any vested rights or existing use that have been inordinately burdened. Based on this report, we feel like we could, there's a substantial likelihood we would prevail at that stage, so your primary risk is the attorney's fees associated with that. Anchor Smith Grimsley estimates that the cost in attorney's fees to get through that step would be approximately $10,000 to $20,000, but of course, in litigation, costs can quickly escalate, so...
And Kyle, in this particular realm, Burt Harris, the city's coverage insurance-wise is only $100,000 per year, correct?
I'll defer to the city manager on that.
I would have to come back to you with the maximum amounts per year?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is because we looked it up before when we were discussing the comp plan nine or 10 months ago. Ms. Kopp, was, one of the reasons we use this service was in lieu of spending $25,000, $28,000 for appraisal to evaluate our, you know, their claim. Wasn't that, was that kind of the gist of using this service, which was a lot cheaper?
That was one of the reasons, and also this was a preliminary question to even deciding if it was worth going that route, because before you address how much to offer in settlement, you would want to know if there's a vested right on the property, what it is, and what the development rights and so on. That's why it made sense to go with Ms. Fisher first.
So I'm just trying to lay some groundwork here. So if that's the route, say we take no action, as, which is kind of what she recommended because in her opinion, they don't have a vested right, so we don't respond to the claim, then their only recourse then at that time is to file suit or not to file suit, correct?
Correct.
And that, at that point, we would be required to defend ourselves to get our appraisal, which we know is going to be around $25,000 to $28,000. Is that, is that correct?
We didn't necessarily be required to get an appraisal at that time. It depends how the lawsuit goes, and like Kyle said, I think we have a, we have a strong defense and a strong case here at the city.
Okay, so the...
Just to clarify real quick, Mayor, in the first step of the proceeding, it's simply an entitlement that the trial judge would come up with. It's the second step, which would, if the fishing fleet prevails at that first step, they would consider damages, and that's when we would really need to get the appraisal of.
So the most cost-effective thing for us to do most likely in response is either to take no action or say we're not going to settle at this time, correct?
Well, I will defer to the council on whether there's an amount that you want to offer for settlement or not, or anything that you want to discuss as far as settlement, but we should at least provide a statement of allowable uses per the statute to them, and that could be consistent with the existing zoning and comp plan that is in place now.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was trying to get at, was that point right there, just so, so we all have an understanding of how the process goes, you know, before we come up with a motion or make a thing. Mr. Destin?
Yeah, I read the report, and it made the conclusion pretty unequivocal, unequivocal that they'd have no vested right, but knowing the ins and outs of the Burt Harris Act and some of our exposure, if you can avoid litigation through settlement, that's always wise, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to have legal counsel communicate a settlement offer of $12,000 and send the, and send opposing counsel a statement of allowable uses.
Second.
All right. I got a motion, and I have a second. I have some people up here. Mr. Braden?
I was going to make, I was going to make a motion.
Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. What are the benefits or, you know, legal protections we're afforded if we make a bona fide offer?
If a bona fide settlement offer is made and we then, and the fishing fleet rejects it and files a lawsuit, and we then prevail in the lawsuit, we could potentially be entitled to reasonable costs and attorney's fees because they rejected the settlement offer.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and we have a second. The vote is unanimous, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item C is back in July of 2018. Counsel asked staff to make a request to Okaloosa County Commission to hold the submission of the grant application for Clement Taylor Park renovations until such time as we could discuss the matter with one of our partners in town. We have since had those discussions with our partners in the Destin Fire District, and at their expense, they had a new plan drawn up that omits the southeastern corner of the current Clement Taylor Park parcel for future development. It doesn't specify anything right now, it's just blank. We came back to counsel asking if we could submit that to the county and then they could submit to the US Treasury to see if that would, if by doing so, we would jeopardize our grant, and the response from the Treasury was that if we included everything that we originally included in our grant application, then they did not see any reason why it would impact our grant. That being said, I'm asking for council's approval to submit the final application through the county to the US Treasury to secure the ORAC grant for Clement Taylor Park renovations. It was a total amount of $750,000 less the administrative charges of the county.
All right. I got a, we have a request from city manager, Mr. Oberdear.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Destin City Council authorize city staff to move forward with the Clement Taylor Park restoration project and submit the Restore Act direct component and grant application to Okaloosa County for US Department of Treasury review.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any further discussion on this matter? The vote is unanimous, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Finally, I just have a few announcements with regards to coyote mitigation that we discussed at our last meeting. Staff has been in contact with the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, specifically the Wildlife Services Division. The USDA is in contract with the county to provide mitigation of coyotes at the airport property currently with the county. We have scheduled a meeting for later this week with representatives from the USDA to do an assessment of the areas of concern within Destin city limits, and following that, we'll have a much better idea of what course of action we should take. Along with that, they currently offer relocation services to the county and would also offer relocation services to us of coyotes that are found to be rogue, for lack of a better term. We also have a commitment from Florida Fish and Wildlife that they would be willing to come in and do educational classes at our community center or other locations of our choice to educate the public on ways to help mitigate the animals entering their property in the first place. So we have an educational component, and then we have a relocation component, and we will be meeting with them this week and reporting back those findings to you at the next meeting.
So you feel like this is the way that we should go? Is that because road runners are hard to find?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Seeing how there's a shortage of road runners, I think we will, we will use this dual way to address coyotes. I think one of the, I did a little coyote study myself after we had some complaints, and one of the best ways to deal with coyotes is don't, don't leave them food, so watching your trash and your pets is a good start.
The dual approach is probably best.
All right, so that's where we're going to go. Let's, let's move right on into our public hearings.
I have a few more announcements.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
We just said coyote mitigation.
Yeah, I understand, I'm sorry. The Airport Road Engineering RFQ responses, we put those out, we put a request out in November, they came back in December, specifically December 27. We had five submissions. We threw one out for being incomplete. This is the LAP grant for up to $104,900 for work and engineering improvements to the curve on Airport Road. The bid committee found each of the four completed submissions to be qualified and are therefore recommending that each of them be scheduled to make a 10-minute presentation during the next meeting on February 4, unless council has any objections. Next item is code compliance. Just a brief update, as our code compliance, Joey Forgione and his crew have implemented more ways for residents to report code compliance concerns after hours. They now can call 850-279-6658, or email their concerns to code, that's C-O-D-E@cityofdestin.com.
Lance?
Yes?
What I'd like to see on all the code enforcement vehicles are those two items on the trucks. I think the cost would be nominal, you know, for decals, but I think it'd be a really good way to get it out into the public. I mean, probably out of 12,000 people, we don't have a big audience tonight.
Very good. We'll make that happen. We have a couple of workshops in the near future, one on Monday, February 4 at 5 o'clock in this room. 5 to 6 PM is for paid parking. The second workshop is for comprehensive plan, future land use, and zoning map alignment. That's Tuesday, February 26 in this room from 5 to 7, 5 to 7, excuse me. And finally, our partners at the Destin Fishing and History Museum will hold their 13th Annual Gumbo Contest this Saturday, January 26, from 11 AM to 1 PM at the Destin Community Center. Tickets are available in advance for $12 at the museum or $15 at the door. I urge you to support our partners. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? I have a question for the city manager. On the code compliance telephone number, is that on the website, and if it's not, can it be added?
Thank you for asking that, and I'm going to let Mr. Warren answer that, and he has one other brief announcement to make to the council.
Yes, Councilman Mitchell, the new phone number is on the website. You can go to www.cityofdestin.com/code. In the same way, you can also email code@cityofdestin.com, and they will see that email. That phone number is on that website, and there's also some more details on the process, and we're actually going to continue to expand that information on that site. We've been looking at a lot of other entities, how they're doing, and we've got some great ideas, and code enforcement's been really, really supportive in this, and we appreciate their help.
Thank you.
Also, if you, I would like to also tell you, give you a quick update on our video stream. We thought we had this looked. We worked the last two weeks trying to make sure our live stream is as good as possible for tonight, and when, and everything looked great, and when we went live, we had all of a sudden more problems. So do apologize on that. We will get a clean version on that on the website as soon as we can. I think we now know the problem, it's like it's hardware incompatibility on our internet provider side, not on the new firewall, so we'll get that resolved before next meeting. My apologies to everybody on that. There's a lot of work that went into that, thinking that we had it right, so...
Thank you. All right. Now, time for public hearings. Kyle, would you like to lead us in item A?
First, we have the short-term rental ordinance, ordinance number 18-29-CC, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida relating to occupancy limits for short-term rentals, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for amendment of code of ordinances, Article 6, registration of short-term rentals, amending Section 13-108, local responsible party required, amending Section 13-114, posting of signage, creating Section 13-117, occupancy limits, creating Section 13-118, exemption for pre-existing agreements, providing for incorporation into the code of ordinances, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is the second reading.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. What we will do right now is we will enter into our public hearing portion of this second reading, and so again, remind you, you have three minutes. When you step up to the microphone, just state your name and your address.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can staff just let you know of a couple of changes we made to the ordinance before we start the public hearing portion?
Absolutely.
Because we did change the size of the sign to 18 by 18, and Joey has something to show you that will indicate the size, and we also tightened up the grandfather clause, so I just want to make you aware that that's there before you think you're approving the same thing.
Joey?
We just did one. This is approximate what the size will look like. They'll have to put their registration sticker here, and so on and so forth. It gives them plenty of room. Some of them like to do signs around it and so on and so forth. I don't see a problem with that, just as long as it has the correct information that we can see it from the right of way.
Yeah, so that's a minimum requirement. If they want to put a bigger sign to promote their business, they're able to, but that's, that's what is required, correct?
It's going to be one-size sign, period. No one smaller, no one bigger, one-size. This weighs everyone's uniform, and it's 18 by 18, period.
Neighbors appreciate that anyways. Skip, did you want to talk before we have the public hearing portion?
The only thing I want to talk about was, and we talked about this at the last meeting, on the grandfather clause, we were going to include anybody that had a development order, not just people that currently have rentals, and somehow, I guess in the motion, I didn't get that included, and so when you rewrote it, you didn't include that, and so I think, and everybody agreed that we were going to do that and have them in the grandfather clause, so I just want to make sure that we know that that's going to actually be in...
As long as you put it in your motion tonight, we will go ahead and do that, and it wouldn't need to come back. We're giving more rights to the property owners by doing that.
Okay, I will do that.
All right. We'll step into the public hearing portion of this meeting then, under item 5A. First up, Bill Reddington.
I have something to pass out to y'all. Okay, in doing a little bit of research in reference to the Burt Harris situation, I noticed that in your meeting, you quoted Anna Maria, Florida. And part of that, what I just handed y'all, is stating all those Burt Harris claims, okay? Now, if what this lady mentioned is correct, and there's a $100,000 limit on Burt Harris claims, if you go to Anna, if you search Anna Maria, Florida city, and they have a column in there that you can push, and it'll show you all the lawsuits. Well, I was kind of short on time when I found this, and I only looked at two of them. And one suit was for $280,000, and the other was for $260,000. I don't think your $100,000 limit is gonna cover that, number one. Number two, there was, according to the paperwork that's here, which I think is probably pretty accurate, there was 123 claims, okay, in reference to where that city put a restriction on rentals, okay? The other thing, and I didn't have time to print it, what I will do is I will email it to you all, is a study they did down in Orange Beach when they tried to limit the rentals in that area too. They passed ordinances and so forth. And one of the things I've heard no one discuss up here, other than, and it kind of, this kind of explains it a lot in terms of the complaints that came in about parking, trash, and noise, which is what I listened to for a number of times, okay? Nobody has done anything to mention the economic impact on the area, okay, that I have heard, anyway. I still am hoping that at some point, y'all will take a break on this and study things like the economic aspect of what's gonna happen in this area, okay? From what I hear is, when you limit all that, things like restaurants are closing, okay? Businesses, local people that are supported by this whole situation are having to move away, okay? And I understand it's the local thing, and I get it, I lived here forever myself in terms of lots of people. But I just don't think that the committee that you had sitting in a room could judge the economic aspect of the area by doing the limitations that y'all are trying to accomplish, okay? It may not, I don't know how many properties it affected. There was somebody in here that said, blah, 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 whatever, okay? But the effect to the rest of the world here, rather than enforcing the code enforcement laws that you have on the books right now, today, okay? Without, you know, throwing the whole world upside down here, okay, is something to certainly look at. Number two, or three, or five is, nobody's told the people that don't live here about all this going on that actually rent their properties. I've heard nobody say that they've said anything to the people that don't live here. And if little Anna Maria, Florida, okay, can have 123 lawsuits, what do you think Destin, Florida's gonna have?
Can you wrap it up, Bill? You had your time.
Yeah, I know. So I would just hope that you would maybe table this for a minute to study the economic aspect of it and just enforce the laws that you already have on hand. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, can I ask our land use attorney to weigh in on this article and the comments Mr. Reddington made in regards to Anna Maria?
Um, can we just wait and do the public hearing part, and that'll be the first thing we do after we hear it from everyone else? Is that okay?
Sure, that's fine.
That way, we can just get this portion of it done, and then you can bring that up first. I'll just, go ahead and put yourself on your list. Up next is Mr. Shelton, Daryl Shelton.
Good evening, Captain Jarvis, council, staff. My name's Daryl Shelton, I live at 18 Noriega Road here in Destin. It's been a long, tough road that we've been down this last year and a half. Countless hours of volunteer time, as well as staff time, have been spent in trying to reach a consensus with regard to the regulation of single-family short-term rentals in our beautiful city. There have been faults, accusations against many of the members on the Short-Term Rental Task Force. One man from Texas that manages one short-term rental claimed criminal activity against me and others on the Short-Term Rental Task Force, while another very large rental management company owner stated that the term "quality of life" was a secret word for racism. There's been lawsuits filed and what BS we've been going through. One side wants no regulation at all, while the other side thinks that the proposed ordinance before you on the second reading tonight is far too liberal, especially with regard to the large number of occupants that will be allowed. I've searched the internet over in an effort to find occupancy limits that are this liberal in other cities around the country, but without no success. I've read House and Senate bills that propose to regulate single-family short-term rentals and have found none with liberal occupancy limits such as the proposed 2+4. That being said, I feel that the 2+4 with the maximum of 24, which is one below a hotel, will be a step in the right direction. At least it will get us something on the books that maybe could be tweaked in the future if this does not work. If we do not get an ordinance on the books, this council will be risking the loss of support from folks like me, as it appears that jumping on the bandwagon with the state and supporting and passing legislation preempting home rule would be a more palatable alternative. So therefore, I urge you tonight to adopt this ordinance on the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Up next, Chad Blankenship. I hope I got you right. Yep.
I'm Chad Blankenship, 111 Bay, Emerald Bay Drive, Destin, Florida. You know, actually, I've worked for a vacation rental company, not here to sit and fight with this ordinance, you know, regardless of what was said, but I do have some questions about the ordinance itself that I would like to present to the board or to the council. If anybody would like to respond, please feel free to so, but these are questions that we do have after reading through those. How are the number of parking spaces will actually be determined? How is that actually gonna work? Are we talking about, you know, a little hybrid vehicle to an SUV? That was a big question we had, especially on the signs with the stickers being on there. Are those gonna be numbered? Because if you remember correctly, when license plates, before my time, I was told, before, when license plates came out, you know, people just scraped the stickers off the license plate and put it on their car, make it look as registered, you know, so are they gonna be numbered, or are they gonna be, where they don't come off the sign barriers? So that's definitely a big question we have. On the grandfather clause himself, obviously, it's a five-year period. Does that translate to when the property sells? You know, so does that go along with the sale of the property for the remainder of time, or is it excluded at that point? That's not really quite clear in there. Does all the rental info actually have to be on that 18 by 18 sign, or can we do a rider underneath it? You know, us, Tim Taylor, you know, we all switch properties left and right. If we have to order a new sign every time we get new property, that's gonna get fairly expensive on the business side of it. So that would be something I would recommend you guys to look at, allowing us to do a rider on the bottom that would have, you know, maybe max occupants sleeping, or, you know, parking spaces, that type of stuff. We could change that a whole lot easier than the actual sign itself. And then one other question I had was on Section 113. Let's see here, it's on page four, let me pull it up here real quick. So I'm running out of time. Okay, I'm good on time. And this is actually just about the phone number that's on the sign itself. It says, "The sign must clearly indicate name and 24 contact hour phone number, seven days a week, emergency contact number for local responsible party for said single-family dwelling. If the responsible party number and rental contact number differentiate, the shall say, shall, the sign shall clearly indicate both numbers." What situation would it be that it's two different people? You know, if we have a 24/7 phone number, but we have a portfolio manager responsible for that property, does their personal phone number have to be on that as well as ours as a vacation rental company, with it being local 24/7? Or is that, does that suffice? So a couple of questions that we do have, that we did have on those. Obviously, I imagine there's more to come, but, you know, a couple of things, I do agree with what Mr. Reddington did say and the economic impact of it. I don't know if we have fully understood all of that. We are for regulation, not, that's what was said, we're not against regulation. But I think it needs to be fair, it needs to be equitable, and it needs to be enforceable. And I truly believe that's the way it needs to be. So I appreciate you guys' time tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Blankenship, would you submit those questions in writing?
Of course.
And we'll get them answered.
Yes, I appreciate that, thanks.
I was about to say that, John, thank you. Up next, Gail Pipes.
I'm Gail Pipes. I live at 614 Magnolia Drive, out on Holiday Isle. I've been a 30-year resident of Destin. I'm not going to rehash a lot of things that you've heard over the months. We all know there's been a lot of hearings, there've been a lot of meetings, there's been a lot of input, there's been a lot of disagreement. And finally, we have before us something that could be a win-win for both sides. A lot of the rental properties don't like it because they say they can't bring in up to 40 people in one that's around the corner from me. Yet it's a residential area, and they keep bringing in big crowds. So what about the residents? We have to tolerate a lot of things which we've told you, but here is at least a beginning. You want to be fair, not only to the property owners and renters, but you want to be fair to the residents. So I say to you tonight, please pass this ordinance. It's not perfect, it doesn't make all of us deliriously happy, but at least it's a compromise. The residents hopefully will get some relief, the renters can still rent their properties. You can't bring in huge conventions and put them in the middle of a residential section. But you can still rent your properties with your rules. Yes, they're liberal as to the number, but compromise is what we are having to do here. And I really strongly say, pass this ordinance and look at it as a win-win for at least the city of Destin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pipes. That's gonna be a tough one to follow up. John, you're next. John Pipes. Of course, you could just say, "I agree with everything she said," and sit back down and see, you can pull that one out.
I was gonna give her some of my time. John Pipes and I'm at 614 Magnolia on Holiday Isle. And as most of you, I'm sure, know, you know, we've been through this amendment and turmoil and trying to find a solution. And I pride myself on trying to listen carefully to both sides of things, really. Be fair, you know, be open-minded about it. And I talked to a lot of people at the meeting Saturday, and most of them all said that, just like I have concluded, there are a lot of renters that control their renters. The property owners control their renters. They do a good job of seeing that the covenants and the rules of the road are followed. And they really, and in all of our opinions too, we don't really have a big problem with that. But do we have this undefined amount of what we call uncontrolled situations? And everybody I talked to said, the really root problem, the cause of what we have to try to do is get this thing managed better. So I'm before you to say that I think, and I'll support what my wife just said, is that, you know, we have before us here a chance to get to tap on the brakes and get some management in the little fraction of the uncontrolled things that are exceeding tremendous amounts of occupancy. It's just not real. So that's about half of my time, and that's all I really need to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Up next, Dan Burns. That's the last card I have, but I will look out in the audience, give anyone else an opportunity to share on this issue if they want to. Dan?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dan Burns, and I live at 20 Noriega Road. And thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. As I mentioned, I live on Holiday Isle, where I'm taking care.
Dan, would you press the button, please?
This button?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Usually, I'm loud enough without that. There you go. Okay, well, that is better. As I mentioned, I live on Holiday Isle, where I'm taking care of my 84-year-old widowed mother. I'm not a high-paid lawyer who has been hired to influence or argue for those who would like to make the residential areas of Destin their own personal commercial industrial park. I'm a resident whose family has to deal with the consequences of the actions of the individuals and corporations that these lawyers represent. As a little bit of history for you, my parents bought property and built their dream house in the early 1980s on Holiday Isle and have lived in Destin for over 35 years. Our family has seen incredible changes occur in Destin during those years, some that have improved life here for the residents, but most of the changes have worsened life here, especially for my mom as she tries to live out the rest of her life until she can be with my dad again. When my parents first moved here, they were one of the few people who lived full-time on Holiday Isle. So they would help their part-time neighbors by watering their plants, checking on their houses, and helping out when they would have friends or guests come and stay at their homes. They would invite guests out to lunch at places like Harbor Docks or at Ernie's Meat Market to welcome them. There were rarely, yeah, remember Ernie's back in the day? Yeah, I loved that place. To welcome them, there were rarely any problems because the neighbors cared about the neighborhood, and my parents, and would never allow their houses to be used as party houses packed with multiple families or used as venues for weddings with hundreds of attendees. That would have been unheard of back then and had been considered just plain rude. Unfortunately, today, in many residential areas of Destin, individuals and corporations who own single-family houses have no respect whatsoever for the people and families who live here, none. They advertise and rent four-bedroom houses as capable of sleeping 20 or more people and pack them with four families or more in what are single-family houses. They advertise and market their investment single-family houses as wedding venues and set up tents to accommodate the overflow of people while they party late into the nights. My mom doesn't like to complain as she is concerned about conflict with some of these people and also the owners, so I am now taking care of that for her. It's very unfortunate to see that some of the owners have tried to intimidate residents with threats and other harassment, but that is the reality of today and what we see in many instances by the more radical groups in our society who harass and threaten people who they disagree with. I'm asking that as you vote tonight on the extremely reasonable changes to the short-term rental ordinance, that you ask yourself one very simple question. What kind of rental house do you want your elderly parents, your young children, or your family to live next to? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that haven't filled out a card? Marcy, come on up. I saw your hand, Ben. I got you.
Marcy Bell, 3 Gulf Breeze Court. So I was making a few notes back there, and I'm a little confused on the economic impact statement that keeps being made. If you rent a hotel room for $200, you're still gonna get $200 whether there's four people in it or there's two people in it. If you rent a house or a condo for $1,000 a week, you're still gonna get $1,000 a week whether there's four people in it or there's 12 people in it. My next comment would be, in reference to the 2+4, I was approached by one of the members of the Short Term Rental, not Task Force, but one of the industry, members of the industry, and they asked me two meetings ago if I would support 2+4. And at the time, I really didn't have an opinion. I've pretty much kind of sat on the fence, and it's pretty much where I've been. Today, I stand before you and say, "Let's start with 2+4 and see how that works." We have a whole summer season to go through, and just, we can readdress it when we come back with Task Force. The last thing I wanted to mention was, I want to tell you as quickly The last thing I wanted to mention was, I want to tell you as quickly as I can about my own backyard that happened today. I've been a fence-sitter until today. I have a new short-term rental on my street. That short-term rental owner told me that they were not short-term renting. I ended up having to call them today, because we've had a situation where somebody has come into their unit, and we've had parties, we've had music, we've had shouting matches, we have, I don't know who is actually staying there. Apparently, it was a situation that was set up for Panama City and Pensacola, and this was their halfway point, so they wouldn't have to travel back to Pensacola every night. So, after having several conversations, I found out that they are, in fact, short-term renting, but they didn't refer to it as short-term renting. They referred to it as co-hosting through Airbnb. And that because of that, they were not, they did not have to reach out to the city and file with, for short-term rentals, even though it was less than six months. They had a whole plethora of things that they didn't have to do. Well, I believe that they made contact with the city today, and I think that they were also told that that is not the way it is, and they have to get signs, they have to register, and they have to follow the rules for short-term rental. So, the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is because I think we have a new avenue of skipping around the rules of how we're doing short-term rentals. I'm not, this, these are individuals, this isn't the short-term rental industry that I'm pointing fingers at, but now it's in my backyard, and I've been very tolerant. We have two other properties on our street, and we have no problems with them, we don't even know they're there. But this property has been a huge problem for the past, I'd say, month. So, they're correcting it, they've contacted Holiday Isle, and I look forward to living peacefully in my neighborhood again. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Going around the rules, America, that's what people do. That's why we have to keep making up rules, for the people that violate the rules, right, Joey? All right, anyone, Ben, I pointed you out. And I'll look up again after Mr. Ben gets done with his comments. Go ahead, sir.
Ben Giles, eleven fifty-nine Trune Drive, Miramar Beach. Parker, I watched the video of the last three council meetings, and you stated that if there's more than twenty-four people in a home, the state classifies it as a hotel. That's a partial truth. Statute five oh nine two forty-two one A, which is the definition of a hotel, reads as follows. Put my glasses on. A hotel is any public lodging establishment containing sleeping room accommodations for twenty-five or more guests, and providing the services generally provided by a hotel, and recognizes a hotel in the community in which is, which is, which it is situated or by the industry. There are zero homes in Destin that meet this definition. It appears that you've manipulated the meaning of the statute to influence council members and sway the general public to your position of occupancy limitations of twenty-four on large homes. Your contention that state statute five oh nine, five oh nine two forty-two limits occupancy of large rentals to twenty-four is simply not true, and if you don't believe-
Ben, just address the council as a whole, or myself.
Okay.
Okay?
If that's not believed, then I'm sure the, the city attorney can-
But I just appreciate that, okay? Because I, I don't want a back-and-forth between-
My houses on Hutchinson and Woodward are different than almost all houses in Destin, that they sit on mixed-use zoning, not residential zoning. The classification is Crystal Beach Resort, the same as the hotel next to me, and the same as the Henderson Beach Inn. Page one of your ordinance says, whereas short and tur, whereas certain short terminals are presently located within single-family residential zoning districts of the city of Destin. My houses are not in single-family residential zoning districts, and should not be included in this ordinance. I received permits from the city to build my business on properties zoned for business, and now, for the supposed betterment of the community, my businesses will be trashed. By cutting my occupancy by forty percent, that's exactly what you're doing. I've built homes here for twenty-four years, what do you think I should do? Should I just roll over and give the keys back to the bank? Just accept it? Maybe just, hey, that's the way the cookie crumbles? Parker, how would you feel with your restaurants, if you had to cut your occupancy by forty percent, you know, for the betterment of the community? I, I work hard for my business, just like you do. And, and it's you, the government, trying to take away my business. It's not fair. I've done everything the city asked me to do, and then some. My houses in Hutchinson are sprinkled, and I have fire, five-eight fire-rated sheet rock throughout. We're inspected by the fire marshal, and I have one parking space per bedroom. I paid to underground the power on the entire block. And I'm not getting any more rent in my houses because I did that, but it sure looks a lot better. I offered to install specimen palm trees all along Hutchinson, but was told by your planning department, the city does not like palm trees. Public Works tells me that I have to remove and reinstall the entire sidewalk in front of my houses and move it eighteen inches closer to my property to create a larger swale to handle some of the stormwater from the street. Stormwater is not my responsibility, stormwater in the right of way is not my responsibility, but I'm paying to move the sidewalk anyway.
Can, can you wrap it up, Ben?
Yes, all of this, and your intent on ruining my business. The city's put a cherry, putting a cherry on top by not even offering me grandfathering, though everyone knows what I'm doing out there. The planning, building, legal, and council knows exactly what's going on out there. I have no choice but to try to fight this, and what, what would you do if it was your business?
Thank you, Ben.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Ramswell.
Sure, I would, Mr. Giles, the code you read, obviously, it does say twenty-five or more, and there's obviously some other conditions. The point was occupancy of twenty-five or more. And our own land development code builds on that same definition provided by the state, and the definition of a hotel, an establishment where lodging is provided for compensation other than in a dwelling unit and for twenty-five or more persons. So, that's where I came from that, and I stand by it.
Parker? Okay, just give people that were named in the conversation an opportunity to rebut. Anyone else that would like to share? Ma'am? I saw you. I'll get you next.
Good evening, I'm Diana Barnes, resident of Texas, and the owner of- Okay. All right. I'm Diana Barnes, resident of Texas, and the owner of six thirteen Magnolia Drive, a short-term rental property. In nineteen ninety-five, we purchased our home, one that we had previously stayed in as short-term rentals. We purchased the home knowing it would require renting it out to be able to pay the mortgage, taxes, insurance, repairs, and other expenses, while at the same time allowing my family to use the property. The city of Destin has put before us an ordinance proposal that will affect the livelihood of many short-term rental property owners. There has been much talk about the city of Anna Maria's regulation on vacation rentals as a blueprint for what we do in Destin. The city of Anna Maria's occupancy ordinance substantiates its fact-winding base in part on, quote, "practical firsthand knowledge," and, quote, "common sense deductions." We deserve better than a cut-and-paste, and sometimes verbatim ordinance from another city whose facts and demographics differ greatly from Destin's in size and scope of tourism, residential and seasonal populations, and stature. My expectation is that if my livelihood is to be altered by a task force, that data pertinent to Destin be used, and the task force be balanced and fairly creatively, created. I respectfully request our city council suspend a vote on the proposed occupancy ordinance. Until such time, there has been a thorough, unrushed analysis of the facts by a task force equally represented by those for and against further short-term rental regulation. And a revision of the proposed ordinance has been prepared, and all property owners in the city of Destin have been properly notified of the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ken Wapler, three ten Larip Loop, resident of Destin and bed tax collector, and member of the TDC Council. So, I stand here before you, and I'm not gonna reiterate the things that I've said before, but it's worth just hitting the highlights, and that is, the statistics don't support that the problem hasn't gotten any better. Clearly, there's some bad fish in the sea, if you will, and we need to address that. What I wanted to bring forward to you all today is, ironically enough, the economic impact of tourism in the city of Destin. In Oakliss County, we generated about four hundred million dollars' worth of bed tax collection. So, what is that? That's money generated by people staying in lodging establishments in Oakliss County. Of that, sixty-eight percent of that is generated in the city of Destin, so that's two hundred and seventy-six million dollars collected by the bed tax collectors from tours. Of that, you can, the, the history will show you that a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars is generated in ancillary income in services, whether it's fishing, restaurant, entertainment, parks, all that. So, collectively, from an economic impact, it's pretty significant to the city of Destin. What, 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 what does the city benefit from that? I can tell you that recently, the TDC Council approved two main things that the city's residents did not have to fund. One is called the dredging of the East Pass. That money was raised by the bed tax collectors, not the edebolorum tax, not the property taxes, but the bed tax collectors, that is gonna dredge the East Pass, which we all agree needs to happen. The residual of that is Holiday Isle is getting sand. Again, the Holiday Isle residents didn't have to pay for that. Bed tax collectors paid for that with their efforts. So, when you look at what's the economic impact of what tourism does in the city of Destin, it does some good. It also funded the, the bypass, you know, whether the bypass happens or not, I know it's still on the agenda for discussion, but, you know, that's another three-point-five million dollars. And clearly, tourism generates the need for infrastructure improvement in the city of Destin, there's no doubt about that, but also, at the same time, tourism generates a heck of a lot of income for the city of Destin, for its residents, for its businesses. As a professor at the Northwest Florida State College, I teach the intro to hospitality. One of the things that I say to the students all the time is, "Where else do you find a Cracker Barrel not off of a major interstate?" Why is that? That's because of tourism. And I would, I would submit to the group that there's a lot of benefit to the city of Destin beyond the numbers that I state, and beyond what you all know, it does have some bad things, and there's no doubt about it, and I've, I've agreed a hundred percent all along that we need to deal with the bad eggs. And so, I will submit as a final time, that if we deal with the parking, the noise, and the trash, we're gonna deal with a lot of the other ancillary problems that we're experiencing. I firmly believe that Joey's on the right track, and if you sit down with him, have a private conversation, he'll tell you who the bad eggs are. So, he knows who they are. The bad thing with this ordinance is, it's one-size-fits-all. And so, I would submit to you that I would ask you to hit the break, take some time, consider the impact financially to the residents, to the businesses, and to the tourism industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone else out there would like to weigh in, sir? Again, hit, make the red light come on, state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is James Barnes. I'm a resident of Texas and a property manager for my family's rental property at six thirteen Magnolia Drive in Holiday Isle. A city council member stated at the last city council meeting that the Short-Term Rental Task Force was created to purposely be a diverse group of people who represented all stakeholders in Destin. I'm here to tell you, that is not what happened. In reality, the Short-Term Rental Task Force was a stacked deck against short-term rental homeowners. The seven-person committee consisted of two anti-short-term rental residents, two board members of Holiday Isle Improvement Association, one of whom was the campaign manager for the mayor at the time when the task force was created, a mayor who also happened to be on the Holiday Isle Board as well, an association that was actively trying to get rid of short-term rental homes. The task force also consisted of a member of the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, well-known for their lobbying efforts against short-term rental homes. This individual only stood to profit from any regulation limiting occupancy in Destin. That leaves only two of seven people who are pro-short-term rentals. This is not putting it in the hands of the public to make an educated decision, this is creating a stacked deck for a predetermined outcome. Only one task force member represented a homeowner who rented their property themselves, whose livelihood would drastically be changed by the recommendations of a hastily-assembled and rushed task force. What about the non-resident short-term rental homeowners? They weren't represented at all, even though they make up a large portion of property owners in Destin. Why was the Short-Term Rental Task Force rushed when there was so much to consider? If the city council approved the Short-Term Rental Task Force for a year, why in the world would the Destin city clerk make a motion for the Short-Term Rental Task Force meetings to be wrapped up in less than four months? Conveniently before the mayoral election in March of two thousand and eighteen. A Destin, a city of Destin attorney warned against even the appearance of sunshine law violations. This could be the meeting of any two members where they could foreseeably be discussing any matters related to the task force. Well, I'm here again to tell you, they didn't heed this advice. There is plenty appearance of wrongdoing and violating the sunshine law here. Holiday Isle Improvement Association Board was actively trying to target and get rid of short-term rental homes the whole time the task force existed. Why were there two members of this board on the Short-Term Rental Task Force? That's not diverse. Why was Mr. Marler's motion to gather some real Destin-specific data after a year of improved enforcement efforts not seconded last, last week? Don't just cut-and-paste the findings of facts from the city of Anna Maria's occupancy ordinance into a proposed ordinance for the city of Destin. The size, scope, the size and scope of tourism and rentals and potential Burt Harris claims in the two cities aren't even remotely comparable. And lastly, the sound of children enjoying their Destin family vacation in a pool isn't a reason to kill Marco Polo, and it isn't a reason to drastically change our occupancy laws without gauging the success of legitimate enforcement of existing codes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak before I wrap this up? All right, sir, one more. Ms. Ramswell, as soon as we're done here, you got floor first. Guys, ask you to make your question.
Good evening. My name is Scott Medlin, I'm from College Station, Texas. I have property on Holiday Isle at three Magnolia, eight Magnolia, and TBD Magnolia, it's a vacant lot. Also have a property on Gulf Shore Drive, also on Crystal Beach. Met with, on my phone, Mr. Captain Jarvis, talked to him a little bit about some of the changes that were coming. And I just want to quickly, as fast as I can, because I've got less than three minutes, or maybe two minutes, whatever's left, a little bit nervous. My wife and I started coming here back in the early nineties. Started at Jetty East, spent a decade coming to Destin, never went anywhere else. Drove down here by family, and friends, and cousins, and all that good stuff, made a livelihood out of, out of family memories and all that good stuff, and wanted to put a flag in the sand. So, sometime in, I don't know, around two thousand and twelve, wife and I got married here in Destin, Emerald Grant. Did everything by the book, brought two hundred and fifty people to the wedding, stayed at all the restaurants, we're here four or five days, spent lots of money. Twenty fourteen, bought a property, first property on Holiday Isle, and then we accumulated more and more properties. I can't tell you about the address that I walked away from two months ago, on Crystal Beach. You know, while I walked away, it had eight bedrooms. I didn't know what I was gonna do with it if I bought it. We have a great management company that works with about fifty houses. I hired an outside company to manage the management company, to watch the trashcans. We're here five months out of twelve months of a year. We're active owners, care about Destin, we're the best walking, talking commercial of Destin, Florida. Captain Ken Barrett introduced me to Destin, he was the mayor of Destin back in the nineties. Y'all know him? Went out on Revoli One, Revoli Two. I said I was a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University, College Station. I live in a college town. Guess what? We got problems. But I'm not gonna change that college town into something totally different. We came to Destin because of tourism. Came to Destin to be a part of it. Came to Destin, put a flag in the sand. The ordinance are interesting, I don't know that all the facts have come in yet. Lot of great owners in rental properties, bringing lots of dollars to this town. I ran my QuickBooks, my QuickBooks report about two weeks ago, since two thousand and fourteen. We spent over seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in Destin, at all the furniture stores, Target, Walmart. Refurnishing these houses that were run down, falling apart. I've even got my own construction crew that comes in and makes routine maintenance and repairs. We take care of our, of our properties, work hard. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, seeing none? Ms. Ramswell, you had some questions of the staff?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Mr. Reddington had brought up this article regarding the Anna Maria and the Burt Harris Act. Ms. Cop, if you wouldn't mind addressing the concerns and the issues raised in that ad, that would be terrific.
Sure. Yeah, and I think we talked about it at a prior meeting as well, but I actually had a call with the attorney for Anna Maria, actually, the mayor was on the call with me one Sunday afternoon, and we talked through exactly what went on there, and exactly how much money was spent in settlement payouts, and that was, no dollars had been spent on paying anybody, because what they did was they grandfathered in some of the occupancy. They also didn't grandfather them as to what they had before the ordinance, though. They have a maximum occupancy in Anna Maria of eight, which is actually quite unlike us at twenty-four, but in their grandfathering, the mayor and I were told that they grandfathered them in at two-for-two, so two people per bedroom plus an additional two. in at two for two, so two people per bedroom plus an additional two. So, I don't know if you have any other questions, but that's what they basically did there.
Okay, great. No, thank you. I just wanted to redirect because obviously, he presented this, and you read it, and you think, holy cow. So, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, and they had also sent out notices to every property owner telling them, you have a year to file Burt Harris, or else you're going to be, lose your chance to file, as I understand it. So, they asked for them to come in as quickly as possible, as opposed to if we don't do that, they have the statutory time limit.
Great. Thank you.
One of the things that a couple folks have claimed in the emails and here at the podium over the last couple of meetings is that they weren't notified, or, you know, the out-of-town property owners. Could you address that, Kim?
We followed all of the statutory notice that was required. We don't have anything in our code that requires us to send notice of an ordinance to anyone beyond what was done in this case. We followed what our code and statutes require.
Which is just notification and publications, newspaper, and online, right?
Yes.
Okay. We might want to improve that in future.
Also, talking about it for two years in public meetings.
Oh, yeah. Over two years, right? Well, over two years. But anyways, that's a claim, so that's just something maybe the staff can look into, that we change our code conduct. I got a couple people that would like to weigh in. First, Mr. Marler.
Thank you, Mayor. Though a lot of the property owners that have short-term rentals are not voters in the city of Destin, they are still property owners in the city. That being said, where do we get the money to run the city? Property taxes. And fees, but property taxes, basically. If we pass certain ordinances to a point of no return, then we devalue the properties, therefore, we get less property taxes, therefore, we have less money to work with in the city where we can't do things. Granted, the citizens of Destin proper who do vote have some rights, but the property owners who have spent thousands, millions of dollars also have those same rights. I have to agree that we have not done due diligence of notifying all the property owners that are involved, all the short-term rental people that are involved in this. It's been said, what's the economic impact? Well, again, property taxes would be down, the bed tax would be down. Businesses may suffer, or they may not suffer. That's a question, depending on how many people we get here. But again, as I said at the last meeting, we're trying to put a car before the horse. We've got so many rules and regulations already on the books. We have a new code compliance department, and we're not even letting them do their job on the ordinances that are already on the books to help. But all we're doing is passing more and more and more and more and not getting it across to the point of no, to do anything right. We've got, it's almost divided 50/50, I would say, between the property owners who are impacted, the citizens who are impacted. We're a resort community. We've got to get used to that. We're not the sleepy little fishing village that I grew up in, and we have to get used to the fact that we're a resort community. We've been discovered, and it's going to get more this year than it has in the past because of the hurricane a little bit about 50 miles east of us. And it's not going to go away. We have traffic issues that need to be solved, we have the short-term rental things that need to be solved, we have all kinds of, our dredging has to be solved. It's not going to get any better, it's going to get, but it's not going to get any worse. It can get better if we try to work together, and the only way to work together is to try to be fair to each and every party. A gentleman came up a minute ago and said something about why my proposal was not seconded. So, I'm going to make it again. I move that we continue ordinance 1829 until the second meeting in October, which is the 14th of 2019, in order to allow code compliance to collect the data on the current rules and regulations and ordinances that we have, and then come back to us then, and then we can decide at that time whether or not we need to add occupancy to that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Seeing none, motion fails. Mr. Oberdear?
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to approve ordinance 18-29-CC on second reading and make a stipulation that we add anyone with a development order, a current development order approved by the city to be added to the grandfather clause.
Got it.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Discussion?
That won't send it back to first reading?
No. No, that grants more rights to the public, so we won't need to go back to first reading.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, then, it doesn't need to come back for another reading, but do you want to see it again, or just add it? Just making sure.
I give you the evil eye. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you.
You could push a button, that actually puts your name up there. Steve?
I spoke with Captain Nix last week, and he is in a position, at our request, to be able to run calls for service during this season for all enforcement actions at rental houses. So, we'll have a better way to ascertain if, in fact, things are being policed properly. And with our code compliance and with Captain Nix, I think at the end of the season, we're going to have a much better read on where we stand.
Would you like to add any comment to that? Captain Nix? It's just a little bit more paperwork, right? Or is your paperwork's already generated? You'll just track it for us?
Well, if you remember, we did the numbers last year for the complaints for 15, 16, and 17. We had a pretty good, we got pretty good compliance with the first time we showed up. So, we can still run the same numbers. It'll take a little bit of time, but we'll have some numbers for you at the end of the season.
Thank you, sir. Joey?
We're going to be working a lot closer with the sheriff's office. So, when they respond, let's say we get a noise violation during the daytime, rowdy, we're going to contact the sheriff's office, let them know, we're both going to respond. We're going to document that as well. We'll also have their CADs. So, after hours, if we don't show up to, let's say, we don't know about a disturbance, loud noise, we don't know about it. Well, that following day or by the end of that week, I'm going to have a run report with the Destin sergeant, so I'll know which houses, I'll get the CADs, that'll be entered in their files. As they continue, I'm just building the case files, is what I'm doing. Then they'll be going. I'll have it documented by the sheriff's office, we'll have our documentation, we'll move forward.
And that information will be useful when they renew their BTRs, correct?
Absolutely. Everything will come in, we're doing everything in a full circle.
All right, thank you. Any other further comments? We have a motion, we have a second. I don't want to jackjaw, I've been accused of jackjawing, fear-mongering, and pontificating. So, I'm not going to do none of those things, even though I'm not quite clear what they all are, I have a general idea. I think that this ordinance has been a work in progress, and it's a compromise. I don't think anybody's, there's not one group that's going to be completely happy with it. If it was me, and if I had a vote, I wouldn't vote for it because I would like for these two gentlemen to do their job for the next 12 months and see where we land. But I don't have a vote, and that's all I'm going to say about it. So, if there's no other comments, I'm going to go ahead and take this to a vote. We have a motion, we have a second. Everybody ready? I think, Rodney? Sorry about that. The vote is six to one. So moved. At this time, let's take a five-minute break.